Monday, September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one. As always, just remember to shut off your other electronic devices while we're having our meeting. I'll call any additions or deletions to the agenda. Counselor DeBouchy?
Yeah, I'd like to add the bylaw and Daryl, if you can refresh the bylaw number, the one that pertained to the COVID protocols and requirements to enter public or municipal facilities. Just want to revisit that. It will become clearer after the library board presentation.
Okay, so under thirteen B, but we'll have to have a vote to see if everybody's in favor of adding that on to the agenda. So I'll call for Counselor Lake, you in support of having that added to the agenda item?
Sure.
Counselor Jingra?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Counselor Valance, you're in with us now?
Oh, I see a screen popped up.
Well, he's here, but I'm going to give him a second to get tuned in. Counselor Valance, hello, are you there?
I'm here, I'm here. Sorry, I had an appointment and it just ran a little bit late, but I'm here.
That's fine. So Counselor DeBouchy has asked for an amendment to the agenda today to add on a bylaw discussion around the access to our municipal buildings under the COVID vaccination program. He has to get unanimous vote of council to bring it forward. So we have Counselor Lake voted in favor, Counselor Jingra voted in favor. Counselor DeBouchy obviously brought it forward. I'm asking for your vote.
Yep, for sure.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna deny the actual vote because I don't want to put our administration on, on a spot, on its, on its, on an item that we're not, we don't have the appropriate information to support and discuss. So we'll have, if council still supports this after the delegation from the library board, we will bring it back in our two-week meeting to discuss and further with more information and have administration have a proper report. I don't think it's appropriate to have discussion around the bylaw without administration being, you know, informed prior to the meeting. So with that being said, it is defeated because we have to have unanimous support to add it to the agenda. I'm going to add on, so administration just defeated item for the addition under bylaws. Under reports of appointing members aboard, I will bring a report for the AMO board discussions and meetings that took place on Friday, the twenty fourth of September. Anything else?
Your worship, just a clarification, the vaccine mandate was not a bylaw.
Okay, so it was just a motion of resolution of council.
That's correct.
So, so, so either or, regardless, there's no discussion, it has to still have the unanimous decision for discussion to be put on the agenda, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, so we got no other additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I do have a motion here, but move by Counselor.
Counselor Lake?
Jingra.
Counselor Jingra, the council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one. The regime of council has circulated or amended. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Carrie. Everybody had an opportunity to look at the previous minutes of the meetings that were held on the fourteenth of September. The regime of council as well as the closed meeting of council were held on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, circulated amended. Move by.
Counselor Lake.
Okay, you got Counselor Jingra, and second by Counselor Lake, any errors or missions in those minutes? Counselor DeBouchy?
Yeah, okay, so the policy regarding the COVID vaccine included the library board, which is in contravention to the Library Act about authority. So I think that that one should be revisited.
Your worship, we're just, we're not changing the minutes, the minutes are as they appear, we're not changing the actual body of the minutes.
Right, so the minutes we did, there, this is overview of the meeting that took place. So there's no, there's no amendment needed to be made in those minutes.
Correct.
Okay, so all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, first, Mr. Skocinski had his hand up, I just want to get a response.
You just skipped over number three, worship, disclosures of interest. After you, you should pass that before you pass four.
Okay, sorry. I'm going, I'm going faster than my want to go, I guess. So yeah, any disclosure of interest before we get started on this?
No.
Hearing none. Sorry, thank you. And then now the minutes passed by, moved by Counselor Jingra, second by Counselor Lake, that we adopt the minutes of the previous meetings of council on the fourteenth, and a closed meeting of council on the fourteenth. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. So today we have the acting chair, the vice chair of the, or chairperson, I'm not too sure, Amy's got chairperson now. So you've been promoted to the chair of the library board, okay? So Amy White-Horn is in presentation of the library board today to discuss and her delegation, the municipality's proof of vaccination program. So Amy, you know the process and you got ten minutes to give us your overview and your delegations process. We will then ask for any clarification question from some councils and then pass it on to administration. Is any actions that will take place on this report? Thank you and welcome, Amy.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. I have a lot to say in limited time, so I'm just going to jump right into it. Actually, three reasons for addressing council today, to review the roles and responsibilities for all parties under the Public Libraries Act, to request that council remove the library from the vaccination certificate bylaw, we understood it to be a bylaw, and bring forth concerns regarding the treatment of volunteers, suggestions to help with retention on this board. Firstly, I will address the Ontario Public Libraries Act and how it is supposed to be applied. It is evident that this administration and councillor unaware of the role that they play and the board as well. These roles are available in detail through online sources, training and websites, and I've chosen to quote from a document created by the Ontario Library Service entitled Ten Things You Need to Know as a New Library Board Member. I won't read the whole thing, but here are the pertinent sections, and I quote, "The library board is a governing board that gets its authority from the Public Libraries Act. Once appointed by council, the board is a separate, independent corporation with the legal duty to provide a comprehensive and efficient public library service that reflects the community's unique needs." Second point, the library board exercises this authority by making informed decisions that focus on matters of governance. So for this board, that actually included creating COVID nineteen protocols to guide us through reopening. And finally, an important note for council representatives on the board. As a member of the library board, a municipal councillor has the same rights and responsibilities as any other member of the board. In library board meetings, a councillor is obligated to vote as a member of the library board, not as a member of council. I bring these points forward to remind you all of the roles and responsibilities that we all have under the act. And if there are concerns or confusion surrounding where the authority lies, it's better to communicate with the library before making a decision that undermines the autonomy of the board. To do otherwise puts a strain on our working relationship, contravenes the act and creates confusion in the community. The important thing to remember is that the board and by extension the library is a separate, independent corporation. Like other independent organizations in town, the municipality has no authority to make decisions about library operations. This brings me to my second point, to request that council remove the library from the vaccination certificate bylaw. Before I get into details, the library board and staff fully support public health measures that are important in protecting the health and safety of all members of the community. In fact, libraries are an ideal place to help people find reputable sources of information about things like vaccines. But this bylaw is causing confusion. The issue here is not about vaccinations, the issue is that the decision was made by the municipality, no consultation with the library. A decision that violates the act as well as undermines the autonomy of the board as a separate and independent corporation. To date, the library has not been provided with this decision in writing, no volunteers have received instructions, and staff has no outline as to how the town intended on implementing this policy. Instead, we heard about it on the radio. In subsequent radio interviews, it was revealed that because the municipality owns the building, this directive was applied. But I ask you, why are the other businesses in the same building not having to follow this directive? They are also separate and independent corporations, and yet the library was not given the opportunity to present our plan before the announcements were made to the public. As mentioned before, the board established a COVID nineteen protocol to guide the library operations. We are still following all stage three protocols, including hand washing, symptom screening, masks, physical distancing and enhanced cleaning. What this decision has done is to put library operations into an awkward spot, which does not allow for us to fulfill the central mandate of a public library, and this mandate is outlined on the Ontario government's website. The Public Libraries Act, and I quote, "Its purpose is to ensure free and equal access to public library services and information. Under the Act, public library boards established by municipalities are responsible for the operation of their library systems." Free and equal access to public library services and information is the key phrase here. Libraries are a place where underserviced and vulnerable members of the community can gain access to things like computers and the internet. Many of these people do not have the identification that the vaccination certificate program requires. For some patrons, they need to access a library computer to get a health card. That is why libraries were deliberately left off the list of services that were to require proof of vaccination. In the information circulated by the Association of Municipalities Ontario, they have included the following line in their policy update. If a person enters a community center to access the library within a facility, do they need to provide proof of vaccination? No, they only need to show proof of vaccination for those areas under the regulation. Reminder that libraries are not one of those areas under the regulation. The library also has an important role to play in helping community members access other places in the town that do follow under the regulation. So all libraries in the province actually receive communications from Debbie Jewell, who is the Assistant Deputy Minister at the Ministry of Heritage Tourism Culture, where she notes, and I quote again, "Some Ontarians may not have access to the tools necessary to get their proof of vaccination, such as access to a smartphone, the internet, a computer or a printer. We are encouraging libraries, community centers and other community spaces to provide services to help Ontarians access and print their proof of vaccination. This is a service that the Marathon Library provides free of charge. It is a terrible catch-22 that in this town, someone who needs to get their vaccination certificate printed is blocked from entering the library because they do not have a vaccination certificate. It is important to note that even on the town of Marathon's webpage outlining the vaccine requirements, there is an exemption that pertains inadvertently to the library. It lists in the exemptions, a patron who is entering an indoor area solely for the following purpose. Example, while placing or picking up an order. Picking up library materials that are ordered in advance through phone or email is still in high demand. Having the picking up an order exemption while at the same time having requirement for the building is causing more confusion for both staff and patrons. Library staff did have plans prepared for September twenty second, but no one from the municipality asked about plans before imposing this directive. All information has been heard secondhand on the radio, read in the newspaper or guessed at by reading the regulations on the website. Again, it is not the decision about having vaccination certificates or not, that's the issue. The issue is that the decision was made and communicated to the public with no collaboration with the library. I remind you again that under the Act, the board, not the municipality, is responsible for the operation of their library systems. This demonstrates a mistrust in the library in general and shows disrespect for the members of the library board in particular. And that brings me to my third point, how the volunteers on this board are being treated. When the board was established by the municipality, members were specifically chosen as a skills-based board. The community members each had to submit an application as well as participate in an in-person interview. The community members that are now on the board are all experienced and capable individuals. One works in libraries in the education field, one has been a previous board member, is a prominent community volunteer and serves on boards of many organizations, and the other one is me. Before joining the Marathon Library Board, I have served multiple terms on library boards for two different municipalities, including two terms as secretary. That makes this my third board, and although my first is chair, I know very well how library boards are intended to function. Despite this board being created using a skills-based approach, it is clear to all the community members that not only are our skills not being recognized or trusted, there is an utter disrespect for us as individuals and for the autonomy of the board as defined by the Act. The respect guidelines on the Marathon website, which the town has committed to embracing and promoting, are not being followed in relation to the library, specifically under rights, the right to work and live in a positive and productive environment. This library board, in its shortened term, has not been given the autonomy that it needs and is legislated to receive to be productive. We have spent more than fifty percent of our already shortened term trying to address, correct and react to issues caused by administration and council. This is not a new program, or sorry, a new problem. I remind you that Marathon was the only public library in the entire province that closed during COVID. Even though any decision to close a library is mandated under the board's authority, it was the municipality that made that call. The same type of infraction that has brought me before you today. Having to address and fix issues is making us all look bad, and it means the board cannot work on items on our strategic plan or complete the tasks before us in an already shortened term. This needs to stop immediately. I quote again from the respect guidelines, "The right to seek assistance and expect intervention when disrespected." Numerous times it has been brought to the attention of the municipality that decisions are being made that are not within their authority to make. It is not only frustrating, it demonstrates disrespect for the volunteers that are giving their time and expertise in service to the community. Even something as simple as having council meetings during regular working hours means a volunteer like me has had to take time away from work to address this council today. Volunteers may not cost the municipality in terms of wages, but they do require special consideration to make sure they know their time and service is valued and will continue to give their time to organizations like the library. If this is how the municipality continues to treat volunteers, there will be even fewer to choose from, and those that do put up their hands will not stay. There are board members that are ready to leave, on top of the two council reps that have already resigned during the one-year term of this board. With all things, there are also responsibilities, and as a board, we recognize and work towards our responsibilities in the Act as well as the respect document. Specifically, having a responsibility to call attention to the behavior and offer suggestions for more respectable behavior. I do have some suggestions to help move to a more positive working relationship for all involved. First, we are happy to facilitate training from the Ontario Library Services regarding responsibilities for boards, council and administration under the Act to help everyone be more comfortable with their roles. Second, if there are issues concerning the library at council or with administration that you communicate directly with the library in advance, specifically with the board chair, remembering that some volunteers work, so you may need to make accommodations. Third, announcements to the public about the library are only to be made by the library staff and/or library board. If administration or council wishes to include the library in public communications, these communications must be approved by the board in advance. In closing, my purpose here was to address three things. One, to remind us of our responsibilities under the Public Libraries Act, especially the autonomy of the library board. Two, to ask for the library to be removed from the directive as a location that requires a vaccination certificate. This allows us to ensure free and equal access to public library services, including free printing and lamination of certificates. Three, to suggest the municipality show more respect for the volunteers that are appointed to the skills-based board. This can be achieved by not undermining the board's authority and allowing us to do the job we are regulated to do without interference under the Act. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak, and I look forward to continuing to work together to better serve our community with an effective board and an even stronger library service. I hope that this frank conversation has allowed us to put the past in the past and lay the foundation for a more collaborative and productive future. Thank you.
Well, thanks for that, Amy. That was right on timeline, there was exactly probably nine minutes and fifty seconds, so you must have timed that out perfect.
I did.
So thanks for that, and you know, I want to just emphasize the fact that, you know, this council is one hundred percent behind respect and the autonomy of your board. This was not taken in light when we passed this, this actual resolution to have our communities protected and have the safety of the eighty or so roughly percent of the individuals that have vaccinated in the community was not to look at individual organizations or facilities, we just put it as a blanket restrictions for town-owned facilities. That blanket, and that was it. There was nothing discussed about the library specifically, nor the museum specifically, nor the arena, a pool or golf course or anything else. So if there was an oversight, then maybe we are guilty of that, but I think that there is some, some definite discussions we need to talk about, about communications that I do appreciate that and respect that, but I think that's something that we all have to learn through from the past. Dilemmas that we've had through the library board and library governance over the last couple of years, and specifically through COVID, because it's been a trying time for all of us. So, so I respect that and we will continue forward and have a dialogue and work with the volunteers that give their time at the library board for sure. But for, I'll ask council to open up if they have any other questions of you, and then we will direct whether or not administration brings back for discussion with the library board on this. So anybody from council? Any questions? Counselor Valance?
Yeah, again, Amy, thanks again for the delegation today. The, I guess the only question I would have is we saw now through COVID changes to the municipal act and changes to the education act to kind of support COVID practices, virtual meetings, stuff like that. Has there been any updates to the library act that support COVID measures of any sorts?
The Act itself, what it does is it sets apart the autonomy of the library board. This library board has put together a protocol for COVID nineteen that guides us in our operations at the Marathon Public Library, and this has been put together not just in a silo with the library itself, but in communications with other members of the Ontario Library Service, the rest of the library boards throughout the province, to come up with a plan that will work for us for operations. And in fact, throughout all of the instituting of the protocols, we followed the reopening of Ontario's Act and followed along with the different steps, and some of those steps that we were having in our library in Marathon was actually more strict than was in other libraries, taking into consideration what we are seeing happening in our municipality. So although it wasn't in the Act itself, it's part of what the protocols for the boards were expected to do through direction from those that were overseeing the libraries and being able to give some more information to boards as they're director, our operations.
Counselor Lake?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So it's nice to meet you, Amy. Like, I'm thinking back to the last couple of years and we had a library board that would come to all of our council meetings, and it was awesome because there were these sort of informal conversations that we had every single second Monday. Kind of had an understanding of how library was going. Like, I've never met you. And I just wonder, you know, in a small town, if we're going to continue on teams, like, how do we establish that conversation? I know that was an informal structure, and I know it was the library chair who took that on herself. But it was really useful in the sense of having that kind of communion with the library, and I do wonder if we're going to continue on teams. Like, is there a space we can make where council has a little bit more face-to-face communication, right? Because I was unaware that there was this kind of breakdown of communication, and like I said, we've never met. So it's hard to hear that for the first time and be like, oh, I, you know, I wasn't really aware there was that much of a problem. I will say on the COVID end, I'm obviously on record saying I'm in favor of those mandates, and I will continue to be. But certainly those conversations, I think, are good and good ones to have.
I'm, thank you very much, Counselor Lake. I'm not sure if there was a specific question in there, but I can tell you that I personally cannot attend council meetings because they're at four o'clock in the afternoon. So that's part of the issue that comes up when we're talking about volunteers, is there needs to be consideration for those who do work during the day. I'm, like I said, I had to take time off to actually be here today. So having those conversations aside would be great. It's just unfortunate that the consideration for the working population and the volunteers that do come for that have not been implemented as part of what I see for regular council meetings. I end up having to watch them in recording later on. Thankfully with COVID, there are recordings for us to be able to do that. But it does mean that those informal conversations that would have happened in the past aren't, aren't there. And although I respect everybody and my personal opinions about vaccine passports aside, it's, it's not the vaccine passports that are the issue, it's the fact that the decision is about library operations, and that is not a decision that council can make, it is autonomous board of the library that makes that decision. We are happy to take suggestions from the municipality and have that discussion with the board and implement that if that's what the board decides to do, but it's the board's decision to make that.
So I don't see any other hands, and I know that we do have a rep still on the board, and you mentioned about no discussion coming back to council. And I know Counselor DeBouchy, we discussed it prior to the fourteenth of this being rolled out because we were, we were going to implement the vaccine passport scenario well before the province announced their vaccine passport. If you listen to the council meeting, they rolled it out with a bunch of confusion as well, Amy. So they really confused us, so we decided to say twelve and over rather than eighteen and under and organized sports, and it was a whole bunch of other criteria. And we rolled everybody under the same umbrella to protect the community. So again, I reiterate the fact that we, this was not disrespectful to the library, library board, it was the umbrella that the municipality took as a leadership in this community, to say we want to protect our members in the community as a whole, and that would affect every one of our facilities, our facilities, and you're right by saying there's other renters in that facility, but they rent the facility. It's not like it's the town-owned facility that is operated by the library board that doesn't rent. It's, it's a different scenario, but regardless of that, that's a decision that council made. You will have the opportunity through council's direction to administration to discuss if there's any opportunities to look at that, but for now, it's just going to be status quo until we move forward with that. Anything else from council? I'm hearing none. So I see Counselor DeBouchy's hands up, okay?
Okay, Rick?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know if it's agreeable with council, then we could direct administration to remove the library board then from that policy for the interim, that will give the people a chance to get information, to get their proof of vaccination and/or discuss with the administration on the timelines for, or exclusion. I know that the library board has a plan in place that was suggested under the, I guess, consultation with the Ontario government that they adhere to level three protocols and still gives people an access to the printers or whatever they may need to get their proof of vaccinations. I think we are all fortunate enough to not have to rely on outside sources. I think every one of us could have printed up our own certificates at home and/or online to get the information we needed. But there is some people who don't have that privilege or opportunity. So I just asked if it's agreeable with council that we ask administration to get into, enter discussions with the library, and then the library can make an announcement, I'll say pertaining to their protocols and access to the building.
So I can only recommend that, as we have in the past, that the CEO of the library contact the CAO of our community through the discussions that we've indicated that we like to see happen as the two organizations administrative roles to discuss this, then our administration will then bring back a report, and if that's quicker than, than the next two weeks, well, that'll be up to administration's discussion with the library CEO. I think the role that we indicated in the past was to have the CEO deal with the CAO and for the chair to deal with the mayor. And so there was some lack of communication, Amy, in regards to the rollout of this. We have a board member that maybe wasn't, wasn't up to speed on the information being brought back to your board, timelines of board meetings, all those various things that happened. But here we are today, we'll try to, to deal with the situation at hand to accommodate everybody that's affected. So I would recommend that you contact your CEO to have a discussion with our CEO in the morning.
That has already taken place.
Okay, so we'll wait for a response from our CEO after this meeting. We're not going to take any actions today, it's a delegation to discuss the, the process we will go through. Fair enough?
Please note, there were actually three items up for discussion today as part of my, my deputation, so this was just one.
Right, and those other items will be discussed as a council to discuss through the chair, sorry, not through, through the board member, because we also have to point another board member, because the board is vacant one position from administration, from council. So yes, we will deal with all those items in discussion with our administration. Anything else? Again, thank you for coming today, Amy, and hopefully we'll see, see some resolution to the, the request that you've submitted through the library board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, up next, council reports, discussion take place in replacing a council representation to the Marathon Library Board. Counselor Valance has submitted his resignation. He no longer wants to sit as a member of council on the library board. So that leaves Counselor DeBouchy as a council rep. I have resigned the board in previous months, so I will not re-offer my name for the position of a library board member. So it leaves Counselor Jingra, Counselor Lake for discussions, whether or not you're interested in replacements of that board.
I have no interest.
And I would be happy to take that position. I actually have my, my masters in library sciences, so it actually might be a good fit to help solve some of those issues that library, that the library board is having with, with council right now, those miscommunications.
Yeah, and I don't think there are issues, I think they're just.
No, I think a miscommunication, whatever, yeah, so that, that my background might, might be helpful in helping to bridge that gap.
It's, it's about communication from board members to council, council members to the library board. That's where it gets in the timelines of meetings, and there's, there's laps in times. And I think, and I, and I, I know Counselor DeBouchy can attest to this, I brought it very clearly when we restated the library board after the resignation of all the previous library board, that we need to have communication from the CEO to the CAO directly on a timely manner, that meant if it was a daily thing or weekly thing, and I don't know if that's happening, Mr. Skocinski.
I honestly, it's it's been a challenge from a communication perspective, you know, with with all of the changes that happen literally on a daily basis. You know, certainly, you know, we don't set out not to consult with any particular group. But it is, you know, you know, as we found out with, you know, on September the thirteenth, the province rolled out a number of potential exemptions for us to consider. You know, a day before our council meeting. Now, what the province didn't note in those, you know, with respect to those exemptions was the municipality does have the higher authority to implement other initiatives and and other motions and bylaws that supersede those potential exemptions to protect the community. So it really is a challenge, to be completely honest, you know, in twenty twenty one to to, you know, have those conversations, but we'll continue to do our best moving forward and and take council's direction to bring that forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that is absolutely right, because when that was thrown back on the desk and we said clearly at our council meeting that we would not confuse the public, we would have a simple twelve and over vaccination, proof of vaccination in our community to protect all community members. It's got nothing to do with the Libraries Act, the Council of the Town and Marathon, the provincial act under the COVID recovery or the vaccinations. It's simply, what are we going to do to protect the residents in our community? So I I don't I don't think this was any malice anywhere across the board. It was just simply, let's make sure we protect our community. Counsel Lake.
Yeah, and and just to go back to what what Becky was doing when she was the, you know, the the chair of the board. It's it's those, you know, communications that keep us from from misunderstanding one another. So and I hear what Amy's saying about working hours and four o'clock council meetings, but we already do kind of meetings with Beat the Gone. You know, we had talked in years past about meeting with the school board or or the college. Is there you know, twice a year when we could get together, even once a year where we could sit down with that board and in a you know, it was nice when it was informal and that worked. But again, you know, we are the to say we don't support the library always kind of makes me laugh because I'm like, we're the only funder. Right? Like, we give them all the money they have to operate. So like, clearly, we support the library. And I think, you know, this council's gone on record of, you know, increasing the library budget when they've kind of come with plans. We listen and and I think we make pretty good decisions. But are there any kind of you know, ways to increase that point of discussion, whether it's formal or informal? And I think you're right, that would solve some of these problems we're having.
Sure. And just for a point of clarification, we we do fund the library's majority of their budget, but they do get some provincial funding as well. Smaller portion, but we do fund the majority of their budget. But you're right. And the thing is, I think the reality is, we did ask for all that to change when we when we re-initiated the the new board. Counsel Valance was part of that that process when we did the interviews myself and and one of our staff members. Counsel Debushi was on the board. I made it somewhat clear that we would like to see communication between the chair and the mayor and the CEO and the CAO. And 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 I think that's lacked in in that regard. And I I haven't, you know, had much reach out from the chair. That's not a criticism. I haven't reached out to the chair either because I have a member of my council on the board to bring councils point of views and the decision makings back to the library board. So is there some guilt of communication on all sides? Probably. But the reality is, we are not out to attack any one of our individual boards. And we certainly don't want to scare away any volunteers in our community by having oversight all the time. We want to make sure they're doing what they need to do under their act. But at the same time, as Mr. Skorczynski just identified very clearly, the municipality has right under the municipal act to override a lot of other acts within the municipal government of Ontario. So we weren't trying to do that. We were just trying to make sure our community was safe community. So without getting into legalities of acts, we're just trying to do the best thing we could as a bunch of volunteers, in a sense, which we are as well. So there is a there is a stipend that we get paid, but it's it's not quite the the amount that people think it's a full-time job that that we get wages for. So Counsel Valance.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate a fact too, when we talk about communication, open channels and anything of that sorts with the volunteer boards, we're September now. The majority of the volunteer boards take the summer off. So coming back into the fall swing of things could easily have been a bit like a very jarring reason for why some things fell through the cracks. I know from my experience on the board for the library that was a board who did take some time off during the summer. So there, I think everyone, it's just a testament to everyone getting back to the full swing of things now that we are September and boards are coming back to the table. So.
So we're on we're on a motion here for the appointment, but I want to make one point very clear. You're absolutely right. We had short order to discuss the safety of our community. So this council discussed all that without the province making their announcement around vaccine passports that we were going to implement something on the fourteenth of September. We held off because we waited for the promise. They made an announcement until twenty seconds. We held off to the twenty second for implementation. But we wanted to do it to protect the community and we'd already agreed to that. We discussed that the library fell under that umbrella. Nobody, nobody spoke to the library. And this is not a criticism of anybody, whether Mr. Skorczynski or Mr. Counsel Debushi. It was just we as council felt that we were putting the umbrella out for all of our protection, for all of our buildings in the municipality. That's it. So you know, was there mistakes made? Okay, there was, but let's rectify those in regards to communication more than anything. That's all. With that all being said, and to move a second to appoint Counsel Jingra to the library board as Counsel Debushi.
Debushi will move.
As I said, Counsel Valance will move. So I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Thanks a lot. And thanks for stepping up for that, Chantel. And and you will communicate very strongly as a library board. And I know that under the Act, it says you must wear the hat of the library board, but the connection is to have counsel on the library board talking on the same page. I don't like when you say board members must wear the hat only of the library board. You are a council member, so you should be representing council and council's views. But yet you are a library board member, so you vote in regards to the library board, but you're still there representing the council, the town and marathon, not a citizen. If you wanted to be a citizen representation, you would step away from council and join the library board. You're appointed by this council to sit as a council rep on the library board. You vote under the Libraries Act, as they say, for the libraries resolutions and all that. But you're still bringing the view of council to discuss so that the board understands what council is feeling as well. Counsel Debushi.
And I somewhat beg to differ on that because as a board member, your responsibility is the best interest of the board. As a council rep, you are a council rep. You are not councilman or councilperson on the board. And that's the way it was structured. From that perspective, your duty as any board, if you sit on DSAP, health unit, whatever it may be, is yes, to express the interest or the interest or your perspective from your perspective of community, but is also to to represent the board's best interest, not the community's best interest. And hopefully at most all times, it's the same interest. However, what I think we're missing in your philosophy kind of differs is that this board is a separate entity from the town, even though they are funded from the town. They are a separate entity. It's no different than the DSAP for us saying to the DSAP, you know, you have to follow our rules. It's not. I mean, there are certain things that they have autonomy over. And I think that's what the board's trying to stress. They have autonomy over the library and the operation. And by us imposing our restrictions on them without consultation, and I think that's the key point, that we're circumventing their authority. And I think other than because on record, there's the library board is not opposed to any restrictions or even the implementation of the restrictions that would mirror the town's position. It's that they were not consulted and they were not given the ability to exercise their authority to exercise or to implement those restrictions. So I think it's different from the perspective. This is not about this is not only about the COVID restrictions, it's about autonomy. And I think we set up this library board so that they were skilled based that we could trust that they will run the operations. And I think what we're doing in a sense is imposing our mandate on them without consultation. And you're right, there is some things how, you know, about that fell through the gaps. The fact that I was away for a month and came back to the meeting just prior to or reviewed it on Thursday when I had internet access since I was up in northern Manitoba. That fell through the cracks. But again, there were three issues that the chair pointed out that they that they need or the board feels they need to resolve. And and it's not just the COVID vaccine. It's maybe the tip of the iceberg that of what we're not accomplishing through that board.
Yeah, we will agree to disagree on that philosophy in regards to the representation that you bring to the board. I think Amy made it very clear that the once you're on the board, you're representing the board, the library board. I don't disagree with that. But I'm going to library board with the view of the interests of the municipality. So I'm bringing that cross-reference to the board from my role as a council member to also say that here's what the municipality thinks is the best interest of the community through the library. So we have that that dialogue to make sure that we're representing the whole community from a point of view from all angles. So that's the difference in the philosophy in that regard. Yeah, but I am always a proponent of not wearing just one hat. You're a two-hat person, maybe sometimes a three or four-hat person. You have to bring that balance and you have to understand the role that you play in in the municipality. Counsel Lake.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I I think, you know, what's neat about the the council right now is we've all been members of the library board. I did my six years. I think Rick's done or the mayor's done tons of years. So I think we've all been part of that board and worked with it. But now that I'm not on the board, I just don't hear from it, right? So to then have the the chair come on in a delegation, say, you're doing a bad job. You're not communicating is puts us in a difficult position. So while maybe you're right that you have to wear just the library hat, the role that Chantel will bring is to bring information back to the rest of us so that we don't get caught. And that is just a conduit for that conversation, right? I think that's what I think that's what the mayor is saying is that even if you're wearing two hats or whatever it is, that communication's got to come from whoever's on the board. So that's the one thing I would say as you go into those tables that, you know, I I won't know what's going on the library board unless our council reps tell us.
Well said. Thank you. So with that being said, I'm going to call a question on the favor of support of Counsel Jingra to be the municipal rep as well as Counsel Debushi on the Marathon Public Library Board.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And up next, we have a CEO report verbal update on the COVID nineteen proves vaccination report. Mr. Skorczynski.
So thanks, your worship. So yeah, just a verbal update for council. Since the province implemented the proof of vaccine requirements on September the twenty second. And today you'll specifically see them focusing on our recreation facilities. You know, and also, as you'll see, is you know, the tremendous amount of work every day administration does with respect to COVID nineteen. It sounds simple when somebody makes a presentation. It's not that practical and much more difficult to put into practice. So today's focus is on what we're doing at our recreation facilities moving forward. And then we'll continue to work with our community groups from a COVID perspective. So as the province of Ontario install proof of vaccination effective September the twenty second, individuals are required to be fully vaccinated into certain public facilities. For the town, this includes the arena, the pool, Lakeview, golf course clubhouse, theater and sporting events such as hockey tournaments as an example. All adults using these facilities are required to show proof of vaccination or be refused entry. At its regular meeting on September thirteenth, council passed a motion that required all of those individuals twelve and over to be fully vaccinated to utilize town facilities. Although there are some timelines to work with our youth groups to put those into place leading up to November the first. Administration has consulted initially with the user groups of these facilities to discuss these new requirements. And as we'll see going forward, you know, they've been forthcoming in helping us with them as well as providing some suggestions. I know in the the coming weeks, there's also additional meetings scheduled with our seniors club as well as our cross-country ski club to talk about reopening their facilities as we head into the winter as well. So since the September twenty second inception date, overall compliance with respect to screening and tracking by facility users and user groups has been excellent. We've had additional staff on at the facilities, mainly the rec complex since September the twenty second to screen users users of that facility. But what we've learned, you know, since September twenty second is it's not as easy as it looks on paper. So it's easy to screen if you're a user group. I'll give you a simple example. So with my double A team over the course of the weekend, you know, between Counsel Lake and I, we screened our players and our staff. Right? That was easy. You know, our team's fully vaccinated. You know, easy to move forward with that respect. The same goes for other user groups. But over the course of practicing over the weekend, we had people coming in to watch. So who screens those individuals? You know, it's it's not fair that that becomes a user group responsibility. When we offer programming like public swimming or public skating, very easy for our staff to screen. You must pay and you must show your proof. And we document that and we allow entry into the facility. But it's the, you know, the the random flow of, you know, through the facilities that is, you know, not impossible, but it's very difficult to capture. So what administration is going to review and bring forward to council at the next council meeting is we're going to cost out what it's going to cost to look at a third-party security firm to undertake that screening process. As we get into the busier months, especially with hockey games and hockey tournaments and those things starting, we're relooking at reopening the theater in January, which will increase usership in the the building. Recently, Fort Francis went with a third-party security group to assist at their recreation facilities. So we're going to gather information from them as well. And we'll get some costing to see what it looks like from a security perspective to have a third party do that. I think it brings a number of advantages. Number one, finding staff is extremely difficult right now. So, you know, we just don't have the staff to do this. Secondly, obviously, when it's a legitimate certified security firm, it just brings a a different presence. Like I indicated, we'd have, we've had excellent uptake of proof of vaccination. I haven't heard of any incident in the last week that was reportable that we've had to deal with. And the third is, you know, we did get COVID funds over the course of the last year that, you know, we have to pay for things like security. So what administration is going to be suggesting is we go through a trial period, October, November and December, and see how that assists us in terms of capturing that information. So as a start, I think overall, you know, there's been some, I won't say confusion, but some some learning points. As we're we're implementing these processes, again, I state that it's really simple to to put them on paper, you know, as the province did. Much more difficult to to put them into practice and and probably much easier to criticize what we're not doing so well. So you know, again, we'll we'll continue to to contact our user groups, obtain feedback, have that open loop communications. And we'll continue to improve this process as we go forward. As we know, it's not going away. It's something that's going to be around not just for three months, but for certainly a longer period of time. So the more vaccinations we have in the community, the simpler our job will be as we move it forward.
Great. Thanks for that report, Counsel Counsel Lake.
Thanks, your worship. Yes, certainly. I mean, with eighty percent vaccination rate in our community, it it makes it easy. It means that, you know, there's only twenty percent of the people we're talking about that would be at issue. I do like what I hear around taking it off of the user groups. I just, I I walked in, I was in the arena this weekend and I looked at the coach of the U seven group who has forty-four kids under her care plus parents, and she was trying to do the the screen in. And I just think, you know, when we talk about volunteer burnout, that's one of those places. So I like to hear that we're we're going to take that out of the hands of some of the user groups. And in terms of, you know, hiring a a security firm, I think there again, the other person I saw working was a, you know, one of my former students. She's probably eighteen, nineteen years old as the face walking into the arena. And I just worry about putting sort of a young person like that at that frontline position. I think that's a really, it's a difficult job in some ways, especially if things get heated. So I'm happy to have someone who's, you know, trained to deal with those things. And then in terms of open communications, I think obviously if we go in that direction, we'd probably have to talk to the library board about how to implement it in their building. So but I am happy to see see that idea.
Great. Thanks. Counsel Valance.
I just wanted to simply ask through administration if any of the leaderships or members in a leadership role for these user groups have any questions? Did they reach out to you directly at the township? What what method of channel of communication do they follow to get their questions answered?
Yeah, we've had a number of emails, a number of questions from some of our user groups. The Cross Country Ski Club, the Minor Hockey, Figure Skating, just some clarifications required and also some some concerns around you know, the requirement for for user groups to screen the public, which we've never actually stated. You know, you know, the user groups must screen user groups. But the one challenge we knew going in in a very short turnaround, and this isn't unique to Marathon. We're seeing it, you know, in every community is how do you put these things in place, you know, that how do you put these things in place, you know, that take time to put in place? You know, in, in a turnaround time that, you know, really isn't practical. So you know, the, the province comes out on September 13th and says, thou shalt do this. And then by September 22nd, you have to do it. Well, you know, you factor in a weekend and, you know, administration in, you know, it's four days to put it in place. So I think we've done a really good job. I do think we've done well in communicating it across the community. Like I say, we've, you know, I, I was, you know, very mildly surprised how well things went with public swimming and public skating and uh, and generally how respectful people were of our cashiers and our staff uh, that were doing the screening. People were generally happy that our facilities were open um, and that they were able to use them. And I think the, the other comment that, you know, we're hearing from our user groups is uh, haven't heard anything negative with respect to, uh, vaccinations. Um, lots of positive comments around, uh, the municipality taking that position um, to make it simple and make it safe to use our facilities.
Anything else? Well, thank you for that report. And yeah, we, uh, we still have some work cut out for, for us to, uh, to deal through with the, the vaccine passport process. And we can only encourage you and, uh, and all our user groups to continue dialogue, including the library, so we can have great dialogue and how do we provide the best possible service? And, uh, and accessibility to all the members in our community who have been vaccinated. Cause is the key word. That's what we're trying to do is protect our community members and, and, uh, and work with them. So thanks for that. Counselor Lake, get into the comment. No question?
Sorry, yeah, no, just a question. I, 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 I read a little bit about the QR code. And again, I'm, I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure how it works, but is the idea that the province will be, uh, putting out QR codes and will they be giving readers to the municipality so that as you come in, you simply scan a QR code? Is that, and is that being funded by the province or is that a, a system we will have to purchase? Uh, and is that a direction you see us going?
Uh, yeah, so, so a couple of really good questions. So, uh, the pro, or the province is still, um, targeting late October to introduce the QR code. Um, so obviously, you know, you, you need a, a mobile device to utilize that, but I would say, you know, there, I don't see many people without them. Uh, we already have the readers, uh, at the municipality. Um, you know, we, you know, we use them, uh, for other things. So uh, no issue, uh, with respect to that. And I think, you know, once we get there from provincial perspective, it makes it much simpler for us. Um, obviously right now we're checking paper and checking, uh, PDFs. But when there's a QR code, you know, it, it's a much simpler and quicker process. So, uh, we're ready when the, the province rolls that out. Um, we haven't seen anything, uh, that is different than it coming in late October. But again, um, you know, if we go with looking at, uh, a third party to help assist us in, uh, the current time on a month-to-month basis. Um, the two should align and we should be in a pretty good position, uh, you know, as we enter the winter months.
Yeah, good point. Uh, so, uh, you know, my wife's son came in from B C who has a QR code on his phone. Uh, but obviously we're not reading nothing here in Ontario. So when it does get rolled out, I would imagine it's going to be interprovincial reading on these devices that, because, you know, if we got somebody coming to our community wants to come to the theater or to the arena to swim pool, who's been vaccinated from B C or Montreal or Winnipeg, and then they got a QR code on their phone, we're going to be able to read that, I assume.
Yeah, again, the, the devil's in the details. We, we, you know, we'll see, you know, we, we hear from the province and we read what's coming out, you know, we try to prepare as best we can uh, for it, but until we actually see it and get to use it, then it's, uh, you know, how is that going to work? Uh, I, I know I, you know, I watched a documentary last week on, you know, there were some initial vaccines, um, offered in Quebec that aren't being accepted uh, through the QR code. So what do you do in those scenarios, right? Again, it's just, uh, every day is a moving target, but, uh, we'll prepare as best we can.
Okay, Counsel Lake.
Sorry, last, uh, last question. Certainly this is kind of, uh, for the issue that, that the chair of the library board brought up is uh, for folks that either don't have mobile phones or don't have access to printing. Uh, that is actually, uh, you know, a weakness in the system and, uh, certainly would love to see the municipality and the library talk about who's the best, um, kind of place for having folks who don't have those services, print, uh, that necessary material. Uh, so certainly, I mean, as the C A O and the CEO of the library talk, uh, if one party is better at, at providing that service to folks who don't have access, uh, that would be an important piece moving forward to make sure that everybody has access.
Good.
Yeah. And, and your worship, I just, I do want to point out though, I think sometimes what's, you know, certainly agree with Counselor Lake. But ultimately it's the province of Ontario's responsibility, right, to provide that documentation. So it is Service Ontario who should be the first point of contact. Uh, who have those accommodations in place, uh, to provide the necessary documentation.
Right. And you don't need a vaccine passport to go to Service Ontario to get your documentation.
Okay. I didn't know that. That's actually a great clarification. Thank you.
Yep. And everybody at Marathon, I can't speak for anywhere else, as we all know, we're sending your double dose vaccine card when you left the, uh, the arena or the drugstore or the clinic, wherever you were, you were actually vaccinated in our communities. Uh, both BTCon and, and Marathon with a double dose vaccine, proof of vaccine. So you got that or you go online, you can download like really quick. Now that the rush has been over, it's like literally minutes, whether that's on a computer, a phone or iPad or whatever. And absolutely, if you don't have that, Service Ontario is providing service throughout the day to get those, uh, those passports. Okay, let's move it on to our, uh, motion for check runs. We have a check run here today for accounts payable from July, uh, in the amount of $709,305, $709,305 and 28 cents and payroll in the amount of $188,904 and 26 cents. And for August 21, council payable $557,154 and 61 cents and payroll in the amount of $189,074 and 34 cents, 37 cents. Move by.
Counsel Lake.
Thank you.
Counsel Jingra.
Thank you. Any questions? I know it was, uh, accounts payable for those two months. Hearing none, I'll call a question on favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Gary, thank you very much. Up next we have, um, a report from Counsel DeBouchy on the library board.
Okay, uh, just to let every, the public know that, uh, in recognition of, uh, reconciliation, the library is holding a training session for their staff on Thursday, September 30th and will be close to the public for that date. Also too, um, if people need things printed up, uh, uh, at the library or needs access to get reliable information about vaccines or whatnot, you can contact the library, uh, staff. Uh, and or request information and they will deliver it to you or provide you that information, uh, that is available free of charge. So those who do not have access to any kind of technology that may need it can contact the library and they will get, uh, that documentation or access to that documentation available for you. Again, um, they want to stress that they are, you know, in favor of, um, COVID protocols and that they want to facilitate, uh, reputable knowledge on vaccines and provide people with the information or printed documentation that they may require to follow, uh, any protocol moving forward. So that's the first, uh, that's the information on, from the library board. But the biggest one was that in recognition of, uh, reconciliation, the library is close to the public on the 30th. Thank you.
That's your report. Thank you very much. Any questions? The Council DeBouchy on the library's report. Hearing none. Thank you. A quick update on my emo board meetings that took place, uh, the last week, uh, our emo board meeting on the 24th. Executive meeting on the 23rd, 24th, uh, we had discussions around many items as we always do with, uh, the emo board, uh, it's some usually like 250-page agenda, similar to the D SAB, but a little bit more in-depth. Uh, we had the financial statements provided, uh, budgetary process. Uh, we ran a surplus through the emo conference of over $200,000. Quite well, well, uh, well, the, the function was quite well-run and of course, a huge, uh, surplus which was not anticipated. Uh, we talked a bit about the Canadian, uh, Community Building Fund. The audit committee chair talked about the AMO's, uh, uh, Community Committee, uh, Building Fund, uh, Compliance Audits as well as the information around the funding policies itself. And then, uh, the annual report was provided as well for, uh, emo board members. Uh, Policy Center brought in projections and mythology and guidelines, uh, in regards to how we, uh, operate as an organization and how we can do more timely and appropriate, uh, discussions and keeping things on track because with some 43 board members, it, it is, uh, gets carried away from time to time. Long-term care transformation and pandemic response. Uh, we had a, um, um, broad supplemental package in regards to that. And it's, uh, it's a really in-depth process, uh, dealing with the, uh, the, uh, long-term care facilities in our province and the, uh, the pandemic response itself and the continuation of the pandemic situation with the variances. Then there, believe it or not, there's even people in these facilities that don't want to get vaccinated, but that's another story. Uh, we had reports from our caucus chairs, of course, as we do in every meeting. Uh, we, uh, discussed county, large urban, northern caucus. The northern caucus is all highly because that's more affecting us. Uh, Phenom talked about, uh, their, uh, their L A S, uh, request to the L A S, as we all know from emo. Look at our insurance rates because of, uh, uh, our insurances are all being, uh, hammered with a huge increase in Marathon, 39%. Uh, other municipalities, some as high as 60, 70% increases over year, year over year. Talked a bit about the, uh, the options around that and if, you know, with L A S, you know, buying bulk fuel and, uh, energy, why can't we do bulk insurance purchases? So we're looking into that. Uh, revenue options, uh, for the municipalities, uh, some, some discussion around home sales. We're all seeing a hi, a high volume of, uh, transit, you know, transfers of homes in our communities. Why are realtors only making the money in, uh, land transfer taxes? Why is the municipality able to, to get 1% of that funds or 2% of those funds in the transfer of homes to help offset operational aspects? And that's a very good point. So we, we're going to pursue that a bit through Noma and Phenom. Uh, talked about, uh, their promotion of Northern Ontario. We're going to kind of try to jump on that bandwagon with them literally to have some more about northern, northwestern as well as northeastern and bringing the two together. So that's a preliminary discussion around that. Talked a bit about, uh, the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund that we haven't been funded as an agency for the last couple of years because of confusion on the funding model for both Phenom and Noma. And if that wasn't going to be, uh, taken care of, which it has been, so we thanked the minister to resolve that, but we would have seen a huge increase in our per capita fees to continue to make our organization strong. Um, uh, Noma talked a bit about the bear issues and we're going to submit a request back to the ministry. For example, Marathon dealing with the bear tech. We have one bear tech out of Nipigon, Ontario, and, uh, if that bear tech is called, it might be here that day, it might be here the next day. It's not here in the weekends. Uh, it's, uh, it's not, not a proper service. Everybody gets frustrated and what happens is them, people don't call. Bear wise, they call 911 and 911 gets frustrated because they're overwhelmed with calls and that then impacts the municipality. So that was discussed about the impact for calls for service. Then on top of that, as Mr. Skorchinsky said, Marathon's been pretty mild in regards to the initial rollout of the vaccine passports. While a lot of my other municipalities on our emo board weren't so successful in that they've had some pretty irate individuals going to either, uh, restaurants, bars, uh, gathering areas, arenas, that kind of lost their, 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 uh, their cool. And police were called. And then, so as you can imagine, as we're all getting charged for contract policing under calls for service, if you're getting high volume of calls for service for facilities because people don't want to get vaccinated, we're all going to see an increased cost in our policing costs going forward. So that was discussed as well. And how we address that and hopefully it doesn't get too much worse than, than it is, uh, happening at the beginning, once people get more educated. Talked about amendments and distributions of blue box payments as we all know that the blue box system is continually rolling out uh, uh, as time goes forward. And we already dealt through our, our, um, um, recycling program and how that looks over the next five years. Talked a bit about the, uh, Policy Institute and Director Policy within Noma. Uh, A G M for the Noma Phenom and, uh, emo connecting Ontario Data Authority. Talked a bit about the, the data collection under the Privacy Act. Like this is a lot of stuff that is overwhelming. And again, we are volunteers, especially Noma. Noma and Phenom are volunteer board members on these organizations. Whereas our southern partners are compensated by being on ward, uh, through the county governance as wardens on their county. So when, uh, when, uh, you look at that and Counsel DeBouchy made point of, oh, sorry, uh, Amy, uh, uh, the Chair of the Library Board made point of volunteerism and you know, you can't expect. So we're going to be discussing that on how does that look for board members and, uh, rolling out and trying to attract new board members under that policy as well. And I think there was, uh, pretty well lit. There was a bit more of the Solicitor General on the Community Safety Plan as we're working on. Uh, that was discussed and of course, even the vaccine rollout and Amy did touch on that a bit with the emo. Uh, recognizing if libraries were in arenas, would they still have access to libraries in arenas? And that was discussed, uh, through our meeting. So uh, very, very, uh, well-informed, uh, meeting and of course, very long, but it all worked out pretty well. Uh, there's a lot more that I won't share with you, but you know, the overall, um, gist of that was to discuss municipal matters throughout the province of Ontario. Any questions on that? Good. Thank you very much. Up next.
Yeah, you know what? I, I just sort of a, a comment and it does like when you, we start talking about the experience of, of going through COVID, right? We, we're still like, we're kind of, you know, people react like it's business as normal for municipalities, but uh, it's been a huge burden on municipalities. And I just, uh, you know, like, I, I think about trying to roll out this, this kind of new rules in the arena or whatever. And it's just a, like, uh, uh, at, at some point, you know, small organizations in particular have a hard time just piling stuff on and piling stuff on. And I think, you know, like, uh, people expect us to be perfect as an organization and I think we do our best. Uh, but I think it's, it's unrealistic, right? Like I, when I listened to what you just went through at, at, at that meeting, like, you know what I mean? You still have a job that you have to go to and do, and you're doing, like, we're all doing our best. I do feel like, uh, at some level, you just feel like throwing up your hands and being like, ah, screw it. We can't, uh, like, you know what? We're doing our best. Like, did, did we, we screw up some things? Of course we do. Uh, you know, are there going to be cracks in the system? Of course, because it's all shifting under our feet. I just think, uh, I'm always in, I don't, I mean, maybe this is just a diatribe, but I'm just, it, it's frustrating to be judged to a standard which is not possible given these pretty extraordinary circumstances. So I'm just, uh, as you list the list of things we're dealing with, that was what struck me.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think the biggest problem today is we're seeing that we've never seen in the past is that the, the, um, the frustration that we all experience through social media and armchair quarterbacking where individuals don't even, don't even try to get facts from whatever the issue may be, whether it's in our community, provincially, federally. Uh, and they just, they go on about stuff they, they, and then it just continues to grow from there. Then it becomes back, it's an attack on whether it's a counselor or a police officer or an administration member. It doesn't matter. You know, and I encourage people all the time and I just, I just experienced that last week with a member of our community where they reached out and they, they got clarification on some stuff, you know, around generation mining in our, in our rollout of the Marathon Sports Mining Program. Again, and, and very, they felt very, very pleased that they had the conversation and got all the information as best I could provide. They felt satisfied, but they reached out and I, and that was the key. And I said that our last board, uh, council meeting was just contact any one of us or any one of our administration team and, and, and get, try to get up to speed on what the issues are in our community. And, and in the micro, the micro process of our community, we can only do this. I'm thinking the next level, a little bit macro, where I'm going into the Nomas and the Amos and trying to provide service for the Thunder Bay District that the, the, uh, the northwestern district and then bring it on to the provincial voice. And then we do have a voice at the government table through the M O U. So we are making some headway, but man, it's a, it's a process. There's 14 million of, uh, 14 million residents in Ontario that we're all, we all want it today or yesterday to get it done, right? And it doesn't happen that way. And we know that. So uh, thanks for that comment. And, uh, I know, and one thing I didn't mention is that Noma next week is starting as our first get-together live in 18 months. We're going to do a, a, a strat plan. We have Pat Fanini, who is retired Executive Director of AMO, who's going to be our facilitator. And we're going to do a strategic plan for Noma's, uh, process going forward for the next four years or, or longer. But we've never had one and it's about how do we provide a better northwestern Ontario, uh, to, to the residents. And that includes Marathon, obviously, and, and includes Canora and includes, uh, you know, uh, Mason and Dryden and Manitowage and 37 other municipalities and our First Nations neighbors as best we can. So it's, it's all encompassing the Northwest. So, yeah, we're trying and we're doing what we can, but I, which is encourage people out there in the real world that, uh, it is a, it is a, a role that we take seriously, but we're all, you're, you're right, Counsel Lake. We are all just, uh, humans and we will, we will make mistakes from time to time. It's okay. And, uh, so I'll get under bylaws, uh, bylaw number 210, being a bylaw 3 P O. Bylaw number 1938 being a bylaw to enter into an agreement between, sorry, agreement for police services in a town of Marathon with the Solicitor General, Minister, Community Safety and Correctional Services in Ontario for the time and, uh, for the provision of police services for the town of Marathon to be read first, second and third time and finally passes 27th day of September, uh, 2021. Move by.
Counsel Valance.
Thank you.
I can, Counsel DeBouchy.
Okay, Counsel DeBouchy, any questions on that bylaw? No hands up?
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Counsel DeBouchy.
Okay, so with the, I won't say downloading, but because there were, there was such a disparity between, um, what municipalities paid and then well, the, the measuring used to be per household. Uh, how have the, uh, levels of fairness, I guess, uh, moved? Has my understanding or my concern- Has my understanding or my concern was that was it going to be suspended under the, uh, I'll say COVID issues because of the, that was, wasn't a huge priority for the government at the time.
Well, that, that's all been somewhat resolved. We pay a, a fair share now compared to what we used to pay. We're about one point four million plus. We're down to just over seven hundred and thirty or forty thousand. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, so about half. Uh, we are based on per property, not per house no more. So every property in our municipality that's under the tax rule uh gets a, gets a fee of two hundred plus per property. And then I go back to the comments I just said, both calls for service in regards to those uh bear calls and those COVID-related vaccine calls or whatever they might be. Mental health is really a, a high number. It's continuing to climb. So we will continue to focus on that, but this is also understanding and Mr. Skrotinsky's got a stand-up appeal, you know, of you. They're changing the process again in the structure of the police services boards on the community safety plans. So it's another encompassing, it's be going to be different. We're going to have different board makeup. So that'll be a, a whole different ballgame as well. Mr. Skrotinsky.
Yeah, your worship and counsel, this is just an administrative matter. So at your regular meeting on September thirteenth, you did pass a motion to extend our current policing contract for a year. They do require a bylaw, not just a motion. So this extends our, our current section ten contract to the end of twenty twenty-two. And we'll see what rolls out with the, the new policing system going forward. Uh, but this at least gives us the comfort that under the current system, we maintain that till the end of next year.
Yep, any other questions? Okay. So yeah, that community safety plan will be, be rolled out hopefully over the next several months and uh, we'll see what that looks like for sure. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Great, bylaw carried. Thank you. Up next we have some new business. Uh, counsel hereby supports the tax resolution received by Huron Kin, Kinloss and retained to the P O A advocacy. And for that copy of the motion be forwarded on to the individual listener regarding uh, resolution. Move by?
Counsel Lake?
I got Counsel DeBouchy and Counsel Lake. Any questions on this uh, resolution? No hands? Provincial offenses is a P O A. It's a, it's a process that we get funding from our, our district uh for fines that are recovered from uh charges laid under the Provincial Offenses Act. So it's about clarifying that and getting those fines to our payroll, our, our portion of our payments and time and manner. And there's other, sorry, go ahead, Counsel DeBouchy.
Also, uh, from my understanding, it's also to streamline the payment of those things and because from the last indication we had, uh, from the last AMO that was actually in person that I attended, we still have like forty percent of fines that have been levied are still either uncollectible or not collected. So one of the other things is, is the order right at the spot where you can make provisions to make payments, whereas opposed that if you were in, didn't pay, then they would have to issue a court order and issue a the judgment from the judge to get uh you in arrears. So I think this is another reason why that sleep, streamlining of the P O A offenses act is, is necessary.
Yeah, for sure. And also under the act, the, uh, the, there's very little, uh, I guess to say, uh, um opportunity to go after these individuals and, and, you know, the suspended license, those kinds of things is very hard. So I think we had discussion in the Police Services Act that uh, under the, the changes we go forward with uh the uh cameras on, on individual officers and cars that people will not go to court and fight these charges no more. They'll just pay the tickets. So they might see an increase in payments that way, because you're guilty. Look at sir or ma'am, here's what you did. You ran a stop sign, you were speeding. You know, you, you did this, whatever. So what happened now is they're going to court, they're fighting it, taking court to remand, blah, 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 you know? The system is overwhelmed and, and, and so that's a big part of it. And then the administrative level is trying to collect these fines and there's no, uh, no teeth to the, uh, to the opportunity to go after these individuals. Uh, like a lot of them, not just that, it's under a lot of the processes. Okay, all in favor? No other questions? Carrie? I would prefer, I see a lot of hands, but if everybody could just say, cause
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Okay. Uh, next we have a uh information we received from the Trans-Canada Trail regarding the Great Canadian Hike scheduled for September fifteenth through the October thirty-first. It was about getting everybody out, enjoying the actual trail systems in our community as well. We got a new section of trail up on top of the Mill Hill. I haven't walked it yet, but I have talked to people who have said it's pretty good. So as we talked to the group of seven in the trails committee, signage, 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 but I would just encourage us as well as anybody else in the community to get out and enjoy the trails around Marathon and talk about enhancing or what are we missing and get us back. Again, communicate to us as well. If we don't see something that you're missing or we're missing, share with us. Third quarter year-to-date updates have been received by all council. Anybody had any question, contact Mr. Verbal. See where we are financially. Everything looks good. Anybody had any questions or concerns about that? Please reach out to Mr. Verbal. He loves to talk to you about how the municipality is doing financially. So don't be shy and he will give you the answers. And then uh, that's pretty well lit before German. I do have an announcement in regards to the uh, the thirtieth, we are going to do a raising of the Every Child Matter flag that have been working in concert with our neighbors Bitigon Nishnabe to recognize uh the, uh, the unmarked graves that first was found in B C. But also in recognition of the truth and the National Truth and Reconciliation Day that has been now uh recognized by the Canadian government that takes place on the thirtieth of September. There will be some moments of silence throughout the, the country and at different times and people will be doing different things and uh, we would want to recognize that. So we're going to recognize that with our, our neighbors and the chief Duncan Machano is going to come up and help me raise the flag. I talked to Counsel Lake and prior to the meeting, he is going to bring his uh high school class over. That's uh, that's going to be great. And I think, you know, I'm going to reach out to them, members of this community that if anybody wants to come from both Bitigon BN or Marathon to come and help celebrate this, uh, this flag raising ceremony. It's not just a political thing. I would encourage all members in the communities to come out and enjoy that and uh take part in that. It's eleven o'clock at Town Hall. Uh, so be there and uh, and help participate in raising that flag. And uh, I hope everybody has the opportunity to come or at least uh, think about that day as well, what it means to this country. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none. I thank you. This was a little bit long meeting today, but that's okay. And uh, nothing wrong with having those every once in a while. Good debate. So thank you for that. We will adjourn at the hour of five eighteen P M. All in fear, uh, first, I need more secondary?
Counsel Lake?
Counsel Shingra.
So I got Counsel Lake, Counsel Valance. Thank you very much. Everybody is uh in favor?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Enjoy your night.
Okay.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good week, everybody.